Council meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. Consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any additions or subtractions?
No changes.
All right. A motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Consider approval of minutes of the council meeting held on May 17th, 2012. A motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item three, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance 12-0507, amending the budgets for the various funds departments of the city of Cookeville for the fiscal year ended 6/30/2012. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, since first reading on this ordinance, I have made one change to the general fund, the budget amendment for the general fund, to recognize the purchase of the Heritage Ford property that will become the new public works facility. That change was a $1,350,000 expenditure for that property. So we have additional revenue in the general fund of $782,613 with additional expenditures of $1,977,469. That includes the $1,350 for the Heritage Ford property. There's been no other changes since first reading, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council? Seen none. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. All right. Onto the consent agenda. Item four, consider awarding bids for transformers. Sponsor is the electric department. Item five, set a date, July 19th, 2012, for a public hearing on ordinance 12-0608, amendments to the future land use plan element of Cookeville 2030 plan relating to Bennett Road Extension Project. Item six, set a date, July 5th, 2012, for a public hearing on ordinance 12-0609, amendments to the zoning code relating to automobile manufacturing in the CI, commercial industrial mixed-use district. And item seven, set a date, July 5th, 2012, for a public hearing on ordinance 12-0610, amendments to the zoning code, section 220 CN, neighborhood commercial, to add uses permitted on review, single-family attached dwellings, townhouses and condominiums, subject to special conditions. Do I have a motion for approval on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda? There was a lot to take in.
You did. You read seven real well.
Thank you. I practiced. All right. No questions. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Onto new business. This was even longer. Bear with me. Item eight, hold a public hearing and consider on final reading ordinance 12-0506, rezoning 730, 740, and 750 Blackwell Park from RS10, single-family residential, to LM, light manufacturing. Rezoning 761, 781, 790, and 800 Blackwell Park from CI, commercial industrial, to LM, light manufacturing, and rezoning 1601, Blackwell Road and vacant lot located on Blackwell Road, from LM, light manufacturing, to CI, commercial industrial mixed-use. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the side of this rezoning is depicted on the screen. Here's an aerial view of the subject properties. Here's the existing zoning. And this depicts the parcels or portions of parcels that we'll be considering tonight. This rezoning request was initiated by the property owner, Mr. J.D. Parks. There are two primary purposes for the rezoning request, the first being the extension of LM zoning to the west of Blackwell Park, and the second being to place a number of parcels currently with split zoning into one particular zone. When the Blackwell Park subdivision was approved in 2009, the property was located within three different zoning classifications, the RS10, CI, and LM. The rezoning was not addressed at that time. For the current RS10 LM zoning boundary is approximately located at the beginning of the cul-de-sac at the end of Blackwell Park, right in here. It's where it currently is zoned RS10. There are two entire parcels and a portion of one other parcel accessed by Blackwell Park that are zoned as RS10. The extension of LM zoning between approximately 250 and 350 feet to the west would rezone a portion of these three parcels in here, the portion of this parcel, all this parcel and a portion of this parcel. The largest parcel there, which is parcel 77, which is addressed at 730 Blackwell Park Road, is a large tract consisting of more than 10 acres that extends westward all the way to Pigeon Roost Creek. Immediately adjacent to the west of Pigeon Roost Creek are the parcels within the Town and Country Estate subdivision. The proposed extension of the LM zone on the RS10 property would end, and this is the original plat, let me go back to the aerial photograph. This extension would end at an existing tree line, and this is also where the topography drops off significantly, and it's the planning department's belief that the remaining acres, which would be over nine and a half acres, the topography and the tree canopy would still provide a significant buffer for the residential area here. And when the subdivision was created, it created these split tracks in here, and the other purpose of this request is to bring all these into one zone. So you have some going into the CI to LM, some going to LM and CI, would put them all within the same zone. This proposed rezoning has been approved by the planning commission, and the planning department also recommends for the council's adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Just from looking at it, it looks like what we're doing here is just making it cleaner. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Does that, I mean...
It's very confusing right now with the parcels being split, half in one zone, half in the other. Again, it probably should have been addressed at the time. We had the subdivision plat, but the developer chose not to at that time, and now he's asked to do so, and we would definitely support correcting where we've got split zones on properties.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Mr. Mills, at one time in this area, there was a, around in the backside of Town and Country, there was some conversations about having a new justice center, new prison in the area, and those residents were very vocal about not wanting that piece of property there. Have you heard from any of the Town and Country folks? I mean, having a prison versus light manufacturing, commercial industrial, I don't, there is certainly a difference, but you've not heard from anybody regarding that?
No, there was no opposition before the planning commission, and we've not heard any since. We've had no common sense. The property that you're talking about is immediately adjacent to that.
Right.
This is where the...
I remember that, yeah.
...being considered. This would allow, like I said, still a very significant buffer. You're going from just over, it's just slightly over an acre what's being rezoned back into the LM. The other thought process on this is we've got an existing industrial street that has one entire tract and the portions of two others that are zoned residential that really aren't feasible for somebody to go in there and build a single-family house.
Right, yeah.
And this would allow this to be used, a reasonable use of this property as LM, but still, again, give a very significant buffer. I mean, the topography drops greatly from this down to the creek.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
There are substantial tree foliage there that would help to buffer this area, and again, it's nine and a half acres that still would remain zoned as single-family residential.
Are there any, is there anything to protect the trees on the nine acres? I mean, would there be any reason why anybody would try to cut those down? I mean...
They could.
Oh, okay.
Now, where they couldn't is where it's adjacent to the residential, you'd have to maintain a buffer, but if they wanted to remove the trees, we don't have any type of ordinances that prohibits trees, removal of trees per se unless they've been installed or being utilized to meet the buffering and screening requirements of the zoning code. That typically is no more than 30 feet, so anything outside of that could be removed.
But it is a significant drop-off down, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's own, single-family residential, if they are removed, they would have to be to build, right now it's one large parcel, you can build one house on this.
Okay.
Of course, it could be re-subdivided, but that would be, entail significant expense, and with the topography, that's going to be difficult to do.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Anything from the audience? All right. Seen none. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item nine, consider on first reading ordinance 12-0614, amending Title VIII, Chapter I of the Cookeville Municipal Code pertaining to water main extension and connection. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have some wording, ordinance wording revisions that we'd like to propose to the council. The first one is a water main extension and connection ordinance, ordinance 18-109. The, I've given you a redline copy where you can see the current ordinance and then their proposed changes. The biggest change is in the second paragraph, now, it's third paragraph. Water main extensions outside the city limits shall be at the expense of the developer, which it currently reads now, or property owner except for capital improvement projects approved by the city council. That's the biggest change in it. The rest of the changes are just language cleanup changes, and we'd recommend your approval, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions if you have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council? Any from the audience? Seen none. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item 10, consider on first reading ordinance 12-0615, amending Title 18, Chapter I of the Cookeville Municipal Code pertaining to water connection charges. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor, this is another ordinance that we're proposing changes to for your consideration. Over the last few years, we have looked at connection charges and connection fees, and we've not been collecting the full cost of those charges, and we've let it go and just tried to absorb it the last few years. I personally was thinking that there was quite a bit of escalation in material price, but I thought that would stop, and there'd be a little bit of deflation of cost, but that hasn't occurred, and our staff sort of came to me again after they had run the numbers and said, you know, we're only collecting 50-some percent of our charges of what we're putting in, that we really need to look at it. And so what we're proposing is what you're seeing in the redline version there. This is what our costs currently are, and you can see on that right-hand column, what we're collecting is 51% on a 5/8 inch meter, 56% on a 1-inch meter, 54% on a 2-inch meter, and what we're proposing is to bring those charges back basically up to cover our cost on those. We've run some, I've also put you in a sheet of sort of some similar cities or the area around us and some cities, similar size, sort of see what their charges are and what we're proposing. Trying to think what my next slide would be. Trying to think of another significant change in the redline version will be up at the top. We've changed the wording a little bit to say that a water connection fee established at the time of meter installation, that if you want to purchase one, that the fee would be established at the time that we install the meter. In the past, we've had people come in and pre-buy meters, we've got them on the books, we've still got, I think, about 12 from when we changed them in 2004, maybe a couple back in 2000. And what happens, we take the money and it sets there, cost escalates, and now we go out and it's costing us $1,600, and somebody may have paid $200. And so we'd like to try to clean that up by adding that wording into the language that the cost would be established at the time of installation. And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any comments, questions from the council?
Yes. Mr. Kelly, I noticed at the top of that one sheet that you had redlined for, that it said effective January 1st, 2013.
Yes.
Is there a reason, is that normal process, or what is your reasoning for that?
We talked about it, and I thought it was just reasonable to give people time to acclimate into the system, you know, not have a 14 days that goes into effect like a normal ordinance would do, and that this would give people time, developers time to plan, if they're planning, to go ahead and plan and get that worked into their system. And plus, we've had, not in this one, but for the sewer, we'll talk about in a minute, we've had some other issues with that.
Okay. Are you going to be sending out any notices to any people that this might affect soon?
What I'd planned to do was the meters that people had bought 2000 and 2004 that we're still holding, that once this gets into effect, we would look at it at the time of installation, that they would have to pay that differential. So we would notify those people and tell them that if they want that set, let's go ahead and get it set for you and get it put in the ground, or otherwise, come January 1st, if you want it set after that point, we would charge you that differential cost of what you paid originally.
Mr. Kelly, how long do you think it's been that we've not been collecting?
2004 was the last time we changed.
So eight years?
Yes. And we've looked, I mean, we've looked at it, and we've tried to absorb a little bit as we go. I may have let it go a little bit too far. We had some, our rate increased the last few years, and I hated to go ahead and do it at that point, and plus was anticipating a little bit of deflationary cost on some of the metals, but that sort of hadn't occurred. So, and looking at it, you know, you hate to jump too high, and so I think we need to do it now instead of letting it go.
Definitely. You know, and meanwhile, you know, it's the citizens of Cookeville that are absorbing this cost, so to speak, so we need to...
Yes.
You know, all we want to do is get what we are putting out.
Collect our cost.
Yeah, the cost.
I know this is, we're going to get some feedback from some individuals building a home or some home builders, but it's just the right thing to do is, we've been underwriting this about 50%, and that's just not right. It's, I have sympathy for those that are home builders, it is an increase in their expense, but it's something the city shouldn't underwrite. I'm glad you caught this and are getting it up. This is, we're not making any money on this, we're just breaking even on this.
No, no.
Mr. Kelly, I do have a question or two.
Okay.
And I agree, I think the city, we need to break even for sure on this deal, because like Councilman Anderson said, that if it doesn't, then it falls back on the rate payers in the city to pay for it. I had somebody, some people brought something to my attention that I didn't catch and I didn't realize. On number four...
Yes.
The water connection charges within subdivisions where the water system has been installed at the expense of the developer, including the meter box and service line to the customer's property, shall be one-half of the above charges. The way I see it, if they have, you know, footed the bill for this, you know, right now we're charging them half, which is kind of a tap fee, however we want to label it. So if we increase this, then I kind of see it as we're making money on them, would we?
Well, I've looked at that. We do incur cost. We have labor man-hours to go out, put the meter in, we have the meter cost, we have GIS personnel go out and they GPS the information, they fill out about a 12 attribute form on it, run all that into our system and get that in place. We have, the engineer reviews the plans, they do the inspection, they have, probably on a typical subdivision, maybe 30-some hours into there. So when you add all of that cost up, you know, we think we're around $200 to $300, depending on the subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
And so that would get us about to where we were half price, but that's just sort of on an average.
Right, right. I guess I just, you know, when...
And, and I hate to interrupt you...
That's okay.
But we will maintain that line and that meter and that service after it goes out of warranty, if something happens, and we've had it happen, we'll go back out, and we may have to replace the whole service and the whole, and we're out $1,600. So the remaining money is sort of to maintain that system for eternity from that point forward.
Right. And I understand that. I mean, but, you know, of course, monthly cost for the water fee, I think it's probably a lot for maintaining, I would think. I don't know, I guess I just, I have a little trouble with that part of it. I mean, I like the rest of it, it makes sense, we need to break even, we, you know, that's what we need to do, we need to be good stewards of everybody else's money. But, I mean, I would like to amend this, amend this motion to have number four, anywhere where a water connection charge within subdivision has been installed at the expense of the developer to stay the current rate. I would like to make that motion, just to keep that, because, you know, again, the way I see it is, right now, let's just say they take a 5/8 inch pipe, the connection fee $700, they're paying $350, and if, on average, we kind of think we're out $200 or so for a subdivision, the work to approve it, you know, I just don't see a need to increase it on a developer, I mean, if they've already paid for it. Does that make sense?
No, I understand your position.
Because then all of a sudden, it's like, well, we're making money on those guys. And I don't want to discourage anybody from developing, that's for sure, and increasing our tax basis and increasing services. So I'd like to make a motion to amend this to keep the water connection charges within subdivisions where the water system has been installed at the expense of the developer, including the meter box and service line to the customer's property, shall stay at current half-price charges. Now, I don't know exactly how to word that, because there's different numbers in every one of them here. If somebody could help me with that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Current.
At current charges.
Current charges is... Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before, I know you've asked for a motion or amendment to that, to the motion, but...
We need a second to the...
We need a second on that motion.
There's no, no. Okay.
I made a motion. Is there a second, I guess?
I'll make a second for the sake of discussion.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and to be honest with this, it's a little bit over my head. We went through this in our work session quite a bit, and I appreciate Mr. Kelly's diligence in trying to get us up to speed on all the costs and what actually goes on. And Mayor Swallows, I really do appreciate you doing this. Can we, Mr. Kelly, can we hold this for further study? Can we remove item three for a time period till next month, and that we may take a look at this a little bit more closely to make sure that Mayor Swallows' concerns, that we're not trying to make any money off this? And I certainly agree with him, that we're just trying to just pass the cost on instead of subsidizing via the rate payers. Is there any way we can do that? Is there...
Mr. Epps says on the, we're discussing it now, and we brought it to the table, and we're going to have to vote on it a second time, so I, now, Robert's Rules of Order, my backup, I don't know if Mr. Moore here is quite like Mr. Rader is, but I believe that because we have to vote on it a second time, we can proceed with what our discussion and what we're doing, and then when it comes back to a vote the second time, we can make changes. Am I right, Mr. Shipley?
Yes, you could, you could pass it on first reading like it is, and then if, you could make that change in, I think it's paragraph four, not paragraph three.
It is.
You could make those changes.
It is.
That's true.
And I don't think that would be a substantial change to the ordinance. So then you could pass it on second reading.
I think that's all I was asking, Councilman Anderson. I think that's all I was asking. I feel comfortable voting for the entire project, but I would like to look at this a little bit, a little bit more detail, and if we have to do it the second reading, that'd be fine.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, this is a first reading, so that gives us...
But you do have an amendment and a second on the floor that you'll need to deal with first.
That's right, and we're discussing the amendment now. You forget that I was the state parliamentarian in high school. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second to amend the ordinance to keep the water connection charges within subdivisions, sorry, I'm repeating this again, where the water system has been installed at the expense of the developer, including the meter box and service line to the customers, shall be, shall stay one-half of the above charges, which is, shall stay at the current charge. Okay, any more discussion?
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, I'll probably vote, I guess what I'm, what I'm going to do is going to vote no on the amendment, even though I seconded it, which sounds pretty goofy. No, it's... It is pretty goofy, but if it allows us, since our parliamentarian, Councilman Anderson, kind of corrected me, that we'll have opportunity to discuss it a second reading?
Right.
Okay.
And Mr. Epps, even if you had not seconded that amendment, you could have gone on and we could have discussed within the original motion, so just saying that you don't have to second amendment to talk about it, but...
Oh, okay.
I think you do.
Okay, that's it, no more parliamentarian, right here, stopping right now.
All right. Any other question, discussions? All right, we're voting on the amendment. All right, all vote.
Four no votes, one yes, motion fails.
Okay. So now, onto the original motion, which is, consider on first reading ordinance 12-0605, amending Title VIII, Chapter I of the Cookeville Municipal Code pertaining to water connection charges. Okay. Any discussion there?
No.
Good?
Good.
Okay. All vote.
Four yes, one no on the original motion. Motion carries.
Onto item 11. Consider on first reading ordinance 12-0616, amending Title 18, Chapter II of the Cookeville Municipal Code pertaining to sewer connection charges. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor, this is the next ordinance, ordinance 18-208, Section IV, that we're proposing changes for your consideration. It's also a recalculation of connection fees. We've given you the redline copy, and the main points there are you see is the charges, but in the first, at the first section, the effective date on it is proposed to be January 1st, 2013 also. And we've also made one other change, that any person designed to connect to the municipal sewer system shall, and we've added, submit a valid plumbing permit issued by the city of Cookeville codes department, and then pay the connection charge. We feel like this will get the person requiring the connection, they will go to the codes department, they will buy a sewer permit that they're supposed to be purchasing now, it'll open up a work order in their office where their codes and inspectors can then go look at it. Some of that's been falling through the cracks, so we think this will help clap, talk to Mr. Littrell. We think that will help clean some of this up, and they can then verify that it is a licensed plumber that's doing the work, their guys are looking at it to protect the homeowner, and hopefully that will clean up a little of the issues that we've seen in the past. The second page is, we've added the half charge in the sewer. It wasn't currently charged a, if the developers installed the sewers in a subdivision in the past, there has not been a charge, except there was a $10 inspection fee, and we've we've taken that away. But we have added a half-charge to try to take, to compensate the department for the time that we are going out there. And we think that, that charge is probably more in the two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-dollar range. And I've got you, the sewer tap fees, you can see on the right-hand side of the column there, some of the UDs, the local people we were comparing water, water service fees for, they don't provide sewer service, but you can see the Spartas and Crossfuls, Baxter's, and then we've had some other cities, similar size there, and sort of see where the sewer tap fees are. And we'd recommend your approval and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Mr. Kelly, I'm glad on item four, that you submitted a valid plumbing permit. I think that's critical in some cases, that some people have been taking advantage of.
Yeah, we were seeing that sometimes things were falling through the crack for what, and we would, when we'd sell it, we would tell them, we'd give them a drawing and say, you know, you need to go get a plumbing permit, get the codes inspected, it protects you as a homeowner. But we're finding out, people were lax coming up and doing that.
And thank you for recognizing that.
Any questions, comments? I do want to point out, if you look at his slide here, I mean, there's so many cities and towns that even do cost plus, which is, in essence, you know, we're just trying to do cost. So, you know, we are a little bit behind the times on our, the collection of some of the fees. So this is, you know, our goal is to break even on this thing, and so I think overall, this is a good, this is a good team.
And some of the, some of the towns, and I didn't get into a lot of it, Franklin, probably, they have capacity charges, impact fees, and I didn't try to get in to get all of those things on there. So when you look at some of these fees, you may add another two or three thousand dollars to them, if you're in the Nashville area or Middle Tennessee, some of those areas that have implemented those type fees.
Yeah. You raise a really good point. You raise an excellent point, Mr. Kelly, in that when I was, after our work session, I was kind of looking at this a little bit, and that a lot of cities that are growing, especially, well, a lot of cities that are growing impose impact fees. We're just asking to, we're just asking to cover the costs of the materials and the labor that we're using. So I feel like, I feel like it's reasonable, what we're doing. So I appreciate the work and effort you've put forward on this, so.
And what we did, we pulled three or four of our last subdivision contracts where we've done them, and contracted them out, and looked at the cost, the average cost of what the contractors are charging, not the high one, not the low one, sort of averaged them all out, to sort of see it was costing around a thousand dollars when we were paying the contractor just for that connection over to the property. And felt like that was, most subdivisions are eight, nine thousand dollars per lot to sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Some cities will charge that, to collect that feedback. But, you know, I'm not sure that we're ready to do that yet.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Kelly, I just want to point out, I do have a little bit of a, it's just more discussion, which is fine, because this is a first reading, and so I'm okay with it on first reading, I guess. But the one-half of the above, let's just try, same, the same situation with sewer as water. You know, if they've already paid for it themselves, why pay half again? But that's okay. It's first reading, so we're okay.
Let me point out one more thing, and I forgot to mention it during the water discussion. I'd talked to some of the utility districts around, and if you do a subdivision in utility districts around us, the developer puts it in, but they also charging ten percent of the cost to pay them for inspections and all the fees. So they're gonna pay a ten percent fee upfront of the total cost of that development in their system. We don't do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion?
No.
All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item 12. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering contract for Briar Gate subdivision pumping station improvements. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have a proposed engineering contract to do some construction and rework on our Briar Gate pump station. The consultant firm is CTI, they've, we've used them on the Briar Gate, or the Bell Acres Pump Station. They've done our water plant engineering. We've negotiated a contract with them and are presenting it for your consideration. Pump station was constructed in 1980. It serves the Briar Gate Pump Station. We will be replacing the whole pump station. It's basically outlived its useful life. It's a metal station, it's rusted through. The design of bidding construction services cost is eighteen thousand dollars. I've got a map here, if you know where Briar Gate subdivision is, 111 Highway, Bell Acres, Buck Mountain Road, it's a little subdivision right before you get to 111 Highway. And the pump station sits right there in the middle of the, of this, in the back of somebody's yard. We've included this in our proposed budget. We wanted to go ahead and try to get the engineering contract approved, and get work started because of the timeline of trying to get this done, and lag time on pump ordering and so forth. We need to sort of keep it pushing forward. We want to get that done before the end of October, which is dry months. We don't want to be in there in everybody's yard in November and December. So we'd like to go ahead and start it early, and would ask for your consideration to go ahead and enter into that contract. And we can even date the contract July 1st, or whatever, but it'll sort of let us know that you're on board and would let us go ahead and try to get started.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, council, comments?
No.
Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 13. Consider approval of employee health insurance stop-loss contract for July 1, 2012, to June 30th, 2013. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor, council members, the city maintains a self-funded health plan, and as part of that plan, we obtain stop-loss insurance to help guard against those large catastrophic claims that might really hit the fund balance of that plan. The renewal for the stop-loss would be with Highmark Insurance. Highmark has had the stop-loss coverage for the last two years, three years, actually. And the renewal numbers are seventeen dollars and seventy-nine cents for every single contract that we have, single, each employee that has single coverage, so it's seventeen dollars and seventy-nine cents for that contract. And then for those people that have family coverage, it would be forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents for each contract, and those are per month. The estimated annual premium based on the current enrollment in the health plan is a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, one ninety-three, three forty-six. But I'd recommend your approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
But we asked, I asked this question in the work session, but the cost to the employee are, are-
Zero. There's no change to the premium that the employee changes, or pays for the, for the health coverage, so there, there's no change regarding this at all.
No more questions? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 14. Consider approval of acquisition of property at 140 West 7th Street for the Cookville Regional Medical Center. Sponsor is Mr. Paul Corrath from CRMC.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees is requesting a consideration and approval to purchase property located at 140 West 7th Street in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. This is the former DeVita Dialysis Center, as highlighted up there on the screen. Property is next to properties that the medical center currently owns. Approximately, there's approximately two, or twenty thousand five hundred square feet of land, and that will be used for future parking at the medical center. We'll start this parking project sometime after we take ownership of the property next to that, which is the SAE House, just to the left of this property. And we should, as we recall, we traded some property in the past few months for that. The price of this property is within the range of price that we've recently paid in the last twelve months for properties on 7th Street. Appraisal was done, and appraisal came in higher than the four hundred thousand, and appraisal was about six hundred thousand dollars on the property.
All right, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council? Do you have the price per square foot compared to what we've done? Just, just so everybody knows, I mean, we, this is a pretty good, this is a good deal, actually.
Price per square foot at four hundred thousand is nineteen dollars and fifty-four cents. The range that we paid on 7th Street was between seventeen fifty-four and twenty-one dollars and thirteen cents.
That's right, exactly in the middle.
It's kind of right, yeah, it's right in the, right in the middle of, of the properties we paid.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Corrath. All right, item 15. Consider appointments to the Putnam County Library Board. Looks like I am the sponsor. The positions on the library board, they're coming up, they're currently filled by Ms. Alma Anderson, Mr. Larry Garrett. Both Ms. Anderson and Mr. Garrett have expressed a willingness to continue serving on the library board. Ms. Anderson is an educator in the Putnam County School System, as well as the state parliamentarian championship. And city council member. Mr. Garrett is executive with the First National Bank of Tennessee, and I respectfully request the city council reappoint Ms. Anderson and Mr. Garrett for three-year terms of the Putnam County Library Board.
Point of order, Ms. Anderson can't vote.
Okay. She, I assume she knows that.
I'll recuse myself.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments? Thanks for serving again, Councilman Anderson.
It's kind of been interesting.
And Mr. Garrett. All right, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item 16. Consider ratification of Private, Chapter Number 67, House Bill Number 3867, Private Acts of 2012 enacted by the 107th General Assembly, Assembly, which amends Chapter 223 of the Private Acts of 1961, and any other acts amendatory thereto, relative to the City of Cookville City Charter, Article 14, Section 14.05, Conflicts of Interest. Sponsor is Mr. Jim Shipley. That was, that was rude, how hard that was right there.
That was harder than the rezoning thing.
That was, because there's Roman numerals thrown in there, and I didn't even, I didn't pre-read that.
You did well. All right, this, this private act was approved by the state legislature pursuant to a resolution that the city council passed in February, dealing with conflicts of interest for city employees, its officers, et cetera. And it basically adopts the city, I mean, the state code on conflicts of interest. And to ratify this, this act to make it part of our charter requires a two-thirds vote. And I would recommend your approval.
All right, motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? When was the last time anybody studied the Roman numerals?
That's 14.
Yeah.
As a history teacher, I do all the time.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Well, I guess you don't know what, what Super Bowl is, you're watching.
Oh, I, that I do know. When you're reading it in a sentence, and it pops up at you out of nowhere. Item 17. Consider appointments to the public building authority. Sponsor is Mr. Jim Shipley.
These are appointments that are made by the city manager pursuant to state law and to be confirmed by the city council. Alan Ray has, is going off of the board. Jeff Jones, the attorney with, the county attorney and with Wimberly Lawson Wright, Davis and Jones, P L L C, has agreed to serve. And Jim Martin has agreed to serve another term. And both terms will expire in May of 2018. And I would recommend your approval.
All right, motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
I just want to mention, I've had a chance, as a commissioner, I've had a chance to work with both these individuals at length, and they're just very, they're quality people, and I'm looking forward to them serving and continuing serving.
I also want to thank Mr. Alan Ray for, for his time he had on the board as well.
Absolutely.
Any comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, this is the portion of our meeting where we hear from the citizens and our delegations. I want to, well, we have a, someone from Avery Trace Middle School that I may let Councilman Anderson congratulate, if she would like.
Mr. Beau DeBord is a sixth-grade teacher at Avery Trace, and I've had the pleasure of working with him for three years when he was an eighth-grade science teacher. And he is the coach of our Odyssey of the Mind. And you might want to explain exactly what Odyssey of the Mind does, Mr. DeBord, if you'd step to the microphone. There's your friend, put you right under the spotlight.
Basically, our Odyssey of the Mind team, it is a competition based on creativity and problem-solving, as well as really ingraining in a sense of community within our, our students at our school. I like to think we've got the best of the best here in Cookville, anyway, and these students have really stepped up. The competition allows them to compete both at state levels and possibly even world finals, where they compete with students from all over the globe. This is not something that is just currently happening here in Tennessee or the United States. Over 21 other countries are competing as well, and quite emphatically as well. So this is an excellent program, basically building the leaders of our community for tomorrow. So, that's about all I have.
Thanks, Mr. DeBord.
Thank you. Excellent job. Of course, they won the state competition, correct? And they went, went to the world competition, came in fifteenth out of, out of 42?
Very good.
Congratulations. Represented City of Cookville in Iowa. So, congratulations, great job.
That's good.
Hearing of citizens and or delegations, anyone else? All right, anything from the council?
Just want to remind everybody that the concerts in the park are starting. They started up this past Sunday, and it's well-publicized. And also, the community band will be showing, having concerts on Monday nights, I believe it is. And those are well outlined in Leisure Services little brochures. So, everybody come out and hear those great concerts.
I'd like to say a good, big thank you for all the city employees from last week that participated in helping the hog convention, the Harley Davidson riders. That was a tremendous success. And just the community as a whole received our guest, that they thank so much of us, that they're gonna come back in two years. So that's a big thank you to everybody involved. There's a lot of hard work that went into that, and it showed. And people really admire Cookville and the people in it. Thank you.
And it was fun seeing all those motorcycles, some good-looking vehicles around. I guess you call them vehicles, bikes.
As the State Hog Rally Director said, there were participants from three foreign countries, thirty states, and Alabama. So it was, it was a great attendance. And, yeah, I would like to thank everybody for what they did as well. That was, that was a huge success. We've gotten numerous emails already from people, since they've gotten back home. I know of a couple from Maryland that sent us one, and I'm not sure where the other couple, I think we got that email. Did you guys remember that?
Yeah.
I'm not sure where they were from. Met a couple from Charlotte, North Carolina, met a couple from Australia. I mean, they were just from all over. And they were excited to be here, and they had nothing but praises to sing about everyone involved.
And, Mr. Mayor, let me just add, I think that, it's just a tip of the iceberg, that our sports council and sports authority is already doing many things in order to attract, attract events as like this hog rally that we've done. We've already doing, we're already doing T double S double A, and very successful at that. The hog rally is coming back. It's just a tip of the iceberg. I look forward to seeing what else that we can get, get here, and it's gonna be fun.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that, like you said, this is the tip of the iceberg, because a lot of these- because a lot of these Harley owners are very well-respected and successful people in their communities. And, you know, they're going back to where they live to say, hey, you know, we had this in Cookville, and that was one amazing event. So I think that will, I mean, that'll pay off in the long run, where we, we probably couldn't even put a number on that. But one other thing I have to mention, June 23rd, I know we'll have another meeting before then, but I'll have to mention it next time, too. WCTE Live Green Tennessee 5K race, that's Saturday morning. I have to mention it because my wife is the race director, but I want to mention it. So if I don't mention it, the next meeting, someone please point that out. But anyway, I would like for everybody to sign up. It's a good cause, Live Green, support WCTE. So, anything else?
Also, on June 23rd is Wine on the West Side. If you want to get tickets for it, it's wineonthewestside.com.
Yes, that's a good, another good thing.
What's your baby do?
July 4th.
I think his wife won't be running.
No, she won't be running. She won't be running. I wanted to volunteer to run, but she said she wanted me just to volunteer. Running would be easier. But, all right, nothing else? This meeting's adjourned.